I think I'll wait, ma'am. I was about to start, but now I'm waiting.
Good evening, everyone. I'm a call to order this July 2nd, 2019, meeting of the Gallatin City Council. We're going to begin this meeting like we do each meeting with invocation, the pledge of allegiance. Councilman Alexander is going to offer our invocation and Councilman Overton is going to lead us in the pledge. Please stand.
In every heart pray. If I may bless you God, once again, we come with thanksgiving in our hearts. We thank you, dear Lord, for this beautiful day that God has created. We thank you for this council and what it stands for. Now, Lord, we just pray that everything we say and do tonight will be pleasing to your sight. In Jesus' name we do pray in every heart, say, "Amen."
Please, gentlemen, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now, Ms. Kittrell will call the roll for us, please.
Vice Mayor Camp.
Present.
Mr. Alexander.
Present.
Mr. Fan.
Present.
Mr. Fennell is absent. Mr. Hayes.
Present.
Ms. Love.
Here.
Mr. Overton.
Present.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you so much. There are no minutes provided this evening, so we're going to proceed on to public recognition on agenda-related items. This is the time of the meeting where anyone who is here that would like to speak to an item that's on this evening's agenda may come forward and do so. We ask that you give us your name, your address, and limit your comments to five minutes, please. With that, public recognition on agenda-related items is now open. You may come forward.
My name is Tisha Borders and my address is 2570 Highway 31E, Gallatin. I'm here tonight to give you an update on the Randy's Record Shop progress. We do have, he's going to pass this out, this is our draft plan for operations. He's going to pass that around. Essentially, what we want to use the structure for is obviously a strong focus with music as well as a museum. We also plan to later on possibly offer musical grants, et cetera. So, really, there's a lot of things that this building could be used for, but that's just kind of a detailed operating plan that we're proposing. And I'll get him. We'll pass these around. I only have one copy of these, but this was the proposed site plan that we had done. Obviously, this takes into account if the right-of-way actually did happen, so it would need to be, you know, reworked if that did not occur. But as you can see on here, really, the back buildings and the structures in between, which were the Tattoo Parlor, as well as Howard's, those buildings would be gone. So essentially, we would just keep that front portion. That was the original Randy's. So we'll pass those around. In regards to financial commitments, I'm honestly still working on that. I'm trying to get a meeting set up with United Record Pressing, which is located in Nashville. That is the largest vinyl record pressing plant in the U.S. And they had previously expressed interest in our project, so I'm just kind of circling back around with them and hoping to get a meeting set up with their CEO. I've also been in contact with Ron Bledsoe, who actually started WHIN Radio with Mr. Wood. So he has a personal connection and is also very interested in the project. So that's kind of where we are from that aspect, and I think that's it. That's all I have.
My name is Nikki Nobles and I'm from Nashville, Tennessee. And I'm here tonight as representing Randy's, who's been a part of my life. My father was Gene Nobles that helped start Randy's Record Shop in the mail-order business. And to me, that's just been my life, and I would love to be able to see that Randy's is rebuilt or restored and the history that's there that I carry in my heart all these many years, that you guys would see that that would be a much-needed effort here and for the citizens of Gallatin.
My name is Johnny Griffin, 657 Northwater, Gallatin. As y'all all know, I've been working on this project and I work on it every day. This week, I, there was a similar project in Muscle Shoals, Alabama. It was a recording studio. This actually started and was built in 1946 and they sold coffins in it because it's a Christmas cemetery. Well, in 1969, a group of musicians decided to make it a recording studio. Well, they did for a few years, and then they closed it down. It was just bare walls and the building got in bad shape. The roof had caved in. There was groundhogs living in it. They formed a group of citizens and the city, and they had different fundraising events. This building now, and I have pictures of it here, is about the size of Randy's Record Shop in Muscle Shoals, Alabama. In 2017, it was voted the number-one tourist attraction in the state of Alabama. I talked with a lady yesterday. They charged $15 apiece to go in this. Now, when they got this building, it was like Randy's, four walls, nothing in it. They've gone back and furnished it like it was as a recording studio. By 2019, now they only opened in '17, they had over 42,000 visitors from 50 countries. It impacted the city of Muscle Shoals so much financially. They've had to build restaurants out by this building, and it's out in the middle of nowhere. And Randy's is sitting 20 minutes from downtown Nashville, and we have tourists from all over the world. The financial impact that this has done for the city of Muscle Shoals is unbelievable. And I can see the same thing happening here in Gallatin. We have a much better location than Nashville. We have people that will donate. Nikki has memorabilia. Pat Boone has memorabilia. Lawrence Welk has memorabilia. We have so many people that are willing to donate memorabilia. But I just have to say this, and I know y'all have been patient with us, but we have, we never really had a chance to start restoring this building until it was sold to two people here in town, Mr. Fan, Michelle Haines. Before that, I couldn't even talk to the original people that owned it. You know, and they asked me $500,000 for it. Now, we have a fighting chance. We're in contact with several big, like the record processing company in Nashville. These big companies, I can't call down there and get them on the phone in two or three days and set up a meeting with them. And I know we've asked for more time, but that's what it's going to take with us. We haven't given up, and like I said, I understand the city's point on this building. I think we could probably, you'll have to talk to the owners, but I think we could work out something with them to get rid of the biggest part of the dangerous buildings, like the Tattoo Parlor and all that, and go in and stabilize that other wall. And that would, you know, that would stabilize that building, would make it safer. You know, we just need a fighting chance on this, you know. I've never been involved in any kind of project such as this in my life, but I see what it can do for the city the same way it did in Muscle Shoals, Alabama. I mean, it's tremendous. You know, they say, "Well, the people that know about Randy's are elderly." That's the people now that are up and retired that can start traveling. That's the people that fly into Nashville. That's the people that go to all these, you know, exhibits. They remember all that. You know, this isn't, if 50, 42,000 people can travel to Muscle Shoals, Alabama and from 50 countries and pay $15 a head to get in that building, and we're sitting 20 minutes from downtown Nashville and can fill this up with memorabilia that everybody will want to see. We can rotate the memorabilia in there. We've already got people, we've got big collectors that have big, huge record collections that already agreed to work with us to change it. It won't be, you won't see the same thing in Randy's if you go down there a month later. We're going to rotate the stock. All we need is for the city and the council to give us a chance and work with us. You know, we're doing, you know, I work on this every day. My daughter works a full-time job in Nashville, and we work on this every day, and we're doing it for the benefit of the city of Gallatin and the citizens of Gallatin. But we need, if at all possible, you know, I know we asked for more time, but, you know, we're, I'm running 100 miles an hour. I may not be going nowhere, but I'm running 100 miles an hour, and y'all are the only ones that can help me. So that's the reason I'm up here again, you know. You know, a friend of mine said he wasn't good at begging. I must not be either, but I'm, like I said, I'm trying to save this for you, your family, their children. You know, once you destroy history, you can't, you can't go back next week. They built a new...
Mr. Griffin, your time is way up. I keep thinking you're wrapping up.
I'm going to say one more thing.
Okay.
I've had a lot of people tell me, "Tear that building down, build a new one." In Muscle Shoals, they built a new recording studio, bigger. It didn't work. People wanted to go in the old building. People want to go to Randy's where, where Pat Boone, where, where all the artists, Barbara Mandrell, Johnny Maddox, they want to go in there where history was made, and the only way they can do that is to go in the original building. So I'll get off here before the mayor kicks me out, but thank you, and I appreciate your time.
Anyone else wishing to speak under public recognition on agenda-related items, you may come forward at this time? Seeing no one, public recognition on agenda-related items is closed. Proceed now to Mayor's comments. Just a few things I do want to say. I want to say certainly a thank you to the citizens who have attended the planned Gallatin meetings thus far. I think we've had a really good turnout. Thank the council members who have participated thus far, and we still have some ahead, so we can look forward to that. And really encourage people to come to those meetings if they are able, and you don't necessarily have to come to your own meeting. You can come to any of them, your own meeting, your district, but you can come to any of the meetings that are happening. And I'll tell you about those in just a minute. Also, I want to say again a huge thank you to all of the departments who have worked so hard to clean up from the rash of storms, the never-ending storms. I thought we were going to get another one today, and we didn't. I think we escaped it. So maybe we're on a good, maybe we're on a good track, but certainly, a lot of the departments in the city of Gallatin have worked very hard. Some of the departments have had to deal with damage to our own property, and several of the departments have had to deal with damage to, or clean up from damage to our citizens' properties, and then other departments have had to help manage issues like traffic lights being out and things like that. So we really appreciate that, and I've heard a lot of compliments from citizens recognizing all that our city departments have done. So a huge thank you to you all for that. A few events coming up. Of course, the Fourth of July is Thursday, and the Fourth of July celebration will be happening at Triple Creek Park. Festivities start at 2:00. I believe the fire department is doing their mountain of foam at 4:00. Does that sound right? At 4:00 P.M. And then the fireworks will be at dark, which will be right around 9:00 P.M. If you look on social media, you'll find important information about parking and traffic for that evening. Also, I want to let people know that the Sumner County Fair is here next week. It goes July 8th through the 13th. And then next week, we'll resume some of our planned Gallatin meetings. On Monday night, planned Gallatin night is with Vice Mayor Camp at Guild Elementary from 5:00 until 7:00. On Thursday night, it's with Councilman Alexander at the Gallatin Shalom Zone from 5:00 until 7:00. And then the final planned Gallatin meeting will be on the 17th with Councilwoman Love at the Gallatin Civic Center from 5:00 until 7:00. Also, next week is Chief Bandi's birthday and the Panda at the Pool Party at the Tommy Garrett Aquatics Facility. That happens on the 13th, same day as Chief Bandi's birthday, from 10:00 until 8:00. And the City Hall Car Cruisin' is that evening, too, from 4:00 until 8:00. Finally, the next third Thursday on Main is Rockland Road. Actually, heard some really good things about that band with someone I was talking to over the weekend. And that is third Thursday, the 18th, from 6:30 until 9:00 on Gallatin's Historic Square. And I think that would conclude Mayor's comments, moving us now to the regular agenda. The first item on the regular agenda is second reading on ordinance 01906-31, and for that, Councilman Overton is recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance awarding a bid to authorize a fund to the total of $3,600,000 for water and sewer reserves for 2019 sewer rehabilitation in various areas of the city, and I so move.
Have a motion by Councilman Overton, a second by Councilman Alexander. Is that right? You made the second. Okay. Is there any discussion on this? No, no, no. It was another noise on my phone. So we have a motion and a second, and no discussion? This is second reading on ordinance 01906-31. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. Does pass unanimously. Item two is first reading on ordinance 01907-32. Vice Mayor Camp is recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an order appropriating $438,764 from engineering to street light and traffic signals. Count, so move.
Motion by Vice Mayor Camp, second by Councilman Overton. Is there any discussion? This is first reading on ordinance 01907-32. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, say no. Passes unanimously. Item number three is Resolution R1907-29. Councilman Fan.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution appointing Haley Meredith to the Gallatin Electric Power Board. So move.
Motion by Councilman Fan, second by Councilman Alexander. Any discussion? This is Resolution R1907-29. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. Does pass unanimously. Item number four, dangerous building at 321 West Main Street. Ms. Haimekali and Mr. Chuck Stewart.
I really don't have anything to add. It's really up to this body what you want to do at this point. I don't know if Mr. Stewart has anything further that he wants to add tonight.
I have nothing to add.
We all know kind of where we are, and you've heard from the representatives that are here on behalf of the foundation that is trying to be formed, so it's up to this body.
Councilwoman Love?
We were giving them a couple of weeks, I think, to get some things done, so could we ask if what all has been done?
Well, I think we were asking to show us some proof of funds that had shown in, and that had come in, and I don't... Have you had, can we ask if they've had any? Motion to suspend, second. All in favor? Okay. If someone would like to come forward and address that? Ms. Borders, you're up.
In regards to the funds, like I said, I have reached out to several people. It is a little difficult to get meetings set up with, you know, CEOs and that sort of thing in a two-week span, so I'm working on that. Obviously, the money I'm looking for is going to require a board decision. Hoping, again, the Vinyl Press Company in Nashville, because they do, previously had expressed some interest. So I think that that would be a great partnership with us, especially since we want to try to sell records again, like Randy did, you know, back in the 50s and 60s. You know, that's kind of where we are. Again, 501(c)(3), that's been kind of our biggest thing, because a lot of people, they want that officially in place, has been kind of the hang-up as well.
501(c)(3) has been formed, the, yeah, the designation from the IRS has not been received.
That is correct. That is correct. So that's, that's kind of the hang-up.
And you can technically collect once you are...
Yes.
Formed.
Right.
Retroactive from when the IRS does...
And I've relayed that as well, but, you know, others have said they really want that, the firm decision on the 501(c)(3). So that's kind of where we are. You know, I guess our biggest question is what can we do? I know we've asked for extensions upon extensions, you know, and I guess, big question, if we get that structure stabilized, because obviously, we've estimated it's going to be roughly, probably a million dollars to get the building completely outfitted, and that's with, you know, museum displays, et cetera. If we get the building stabilized and it's no longer a danger, is that your main concern?
No.
No, okay.
I'm going to say the biggest thing.
Okay.
We've been, how long has this been? How long's it been going on?
Okay. It's about a year.
We have not seen any money raised. If, if I had something going on, I could go out and raise $100,000.
Correct.
I know that personally. I probably could. I have not seen any money raised. I have not, not seen any. Is anybody here? That's our biggest hang-up right there is, let's get something and show me the money. That's, I think that's the biggest thing. We, we know the building is, we're talking about asbestos, we're talking about stabilized, it's going to collapse. I'm not so sure y'all are going in and doing anything with that building once somebody gets in there and gets going on it. But we've got to see where y'all are going to show us that y'all can raise the money to, to where it's going to be effective. I mean, that's our biggest hang-up right there, I think. Do you all not think?
Mayor, you know, we've, I mean, we've heard, and we can go back for a little minutes, we've heard a lot of names that's been thrown out that's, you know, going to give us money once all this stuff got put in place. And two weeks ago, we just asked for those people to give us some letter of intents, that they intend to fund this, and we asked for some letters of intent for all those names that was thrown out there that says, "Yeah, I'm going to help you once you get your, your nonprofit stuff in place." But we hadn't seen any of those. I mean, we, I'm not sure that they're out there.
No, I'm good. I'll talk.
So I just, I'm like Craig. I just, I mean, we keep putting it off and putting it off, putting it off, hoping that, you know, y'all could get this thing together and do it, but right now, I think we're just, we're still going downhill.
Well, and I, I understand that, and I know that that's what you expected of us. Like I said, I'm doing my best to make that happen, you know, working full-time, and when we started, you know, we had the previous owners, like Dad had mentioned. We really had no contact with them, and plus, what they wanted for that structure was, obviously, we know what it's sold for. You know, the, the owners currently are willing to work with us, and I think they see the, you know, the, anyway, anyway. You know, they see the, you know, what we want to do with the structure. I guess my thing is if we get it stabilized, and we did have WASCO, which is a company out of Nashville. They do masonry work. They had given us a quote going in and actually putting steel rods in the masonry walls and then putting, I think, concrete down in there to stabilize the structure. I went back and looked at some notes, and previous people involved on the project had also looked at the asbestos, and I think the plan for that, it's my understanding it's only in the floor, that there would be some sort of epoxy coating that could go over that, and I don't know if Chuck could possibly speak to that. But that's a way to kind of resolve that. So essentially, I mean, once that outer structure is secured, a new roof is put on and a back wall, then to me, the building is secured. And like I said, I understand your concerns about the money. We have raised some money through a GoFundMe, and that is honestly really just paid for 501(c)(3). We had logger expenses, that sort of thing. And again, I think people are not wanting to give big money because they see no work being done on that building. If we could go in and remove the center buildings that are not relevant to the project, I guarantee you people would start giving. But right now, that, right now, they see it as kind of a stalemate, and they don't want to give. So to me, that, that's a big issue as well.
Well, the people you're talking to about donations, is the 501(c)(3) their hang-up?
I think the main hang-up on this thing is people do not see any progress down there. Once they see work being done to start the renovation. I agree. We've been working on this for a year. We never had a fighting chance until Steve and Michelle bought it. We couldn't even talk to the owners. They were asking, well, this went on six, seven months. We have not been working, see, we didn't have a chance. We couldn't talk to the owners. We couldn't do nothing. Steve and Michelle, there's it, Steve, have agreed to work with us on this. If we could go in there and tear down those old buildings, put a sign out there, "Restoration started on Randy's", the money will come in. You know, how many people in this room have given any money to help me? Not a one. This has been a one-man operation to try to save this building for the city of Gallatin. I stood up here a few minutes ago and told you what an asset it was to Muscle Shoals, Alabama. They had a hard time on the beginning getting to raise money for that, but once they started work on that building, one guy gave a million dollars. Until we can start some kind of progress on that building, they have the same attitude that some of y'all have. Y'all are not going to fix that building. If we don't fix that building...
We can't fix that building. We can't fix that building.
I understand that.
Situation that we put in. And, and there were some offers to help in the beginning, and they were, mine for certain was rejected.
That's right.
I, I just think that there is a, there are a lot of directions that this could have gone that it has not gone.
Well, I can't change what happened then. I can just go forward.
But I mean, I'm saying even in the last two weeks, I think...
My, my goal in this whole operation is to save this building for the benefit of the city of Gallatin. It's not benefit to me, you know. It's not benefiting me at all. I wouldn't be up here, you know, spending my time, and I spend time every day, if I didn't think this would work. You know, if you, if y'all talked to that lady down at Muscle Shoals, she went through exactly what I'm going through. They took that building, like I said, groundhogs was living in, out in the middle of nowhere. And they had a hard time in the beginning of getting people to donate, but once they started work on that building, they did a documentary on them when they started restoring that building, which could happen down here. When they did, one music executive saw it. He donated a million dollars. Before then, though, we're getting small donations. You know, if, if y'all don't give us, we're not up here trying to avoid you. We're working every day on this. We're, we're working as hard as, I don't know anything, if I knew anything else I could do to make this move forward, I'd be doing... I told the mayor today, you know, "I'll give money out of my pocket on this building." I told you before, the sign down there that says, "Save Randy's Record Shop", I paid for that. Like I said, there's not a person in this building that has given me a damn for this cause, and I'm working to help every one of you in here. But y'all are going to have to help us if we help you. You know, I'm financially not able to go down there and spend a million dollars. My daughter's not. But we want to save this for the city.
But there are avenues to progress, and that's what I have tried so hard to communicate and to help with. And honestly, the only thing that I know to do at this point is to say that, you know, with this council's permission, I would see, make some contacts and make some calls and do some work myself and see what might be out there.
That's what I, you know, I don't under, when I first started this project to save Randy's Record Shop, I thought, "There's going to be people wearing my phone out to help me."
It doesn't work that way when you start a movement.
That's what I'm saying.
It does not start to work that way.
Y'all would have to understand that we're not putting y'all off. When y'all tell us to do something, we try our best to do it. And I see his comment over there, that, that, you know, he could raise $100,000. Well, help me raise $100,000.
Well, my point is, is like, I grew up in Hendersonville. I didn't know who Randy's Records was, and I've lived here all my life, 55 years. To me, the place has gone downhill. Why has somebody and I done it before now? Why let it get to that shape, is what I'm saying. To me, to me, I'm not sold on that it's going to be a major tourist attraction for Gallatin.
Nor am I sold on that.
I'm not sold on that. I am not sold on what you're saying. I'm, you're not selling me on what you're saying.
But let's not have an argument here.
That's what I'm saying. You're not, you're not selling me on what you're saying. I'm not sold on that. And I won't be. I won't be.
What Craig is also saying about raising money is that there's so many different charities that get out there and have dinners or...
And we haven't, there hasn't been a fundraiser.
Family. I'm just, I didn't see what I said, but I'm just saying, that's my point. I'm not sold on what you're trying to do.
We haven't seen any fundraising either.
Had you ever heard of Muscle Shoals Recording Studio?
Okay.
Nope.
They were successful in their, they were successful in their efforts, and they were successful, and I went back and read after we spent some time together, and it actually, the documentary was before it ever happened. So sometimes things happen by accident, and this, to a large degree, was. Well, I don't, I, I don't know how to create that accident for us, but I have had some thoughts on some things I might at least make... for us, but I have had some thoughts on some things, I might at least make some calls and stuff on to see, because I don't know. I just don't know that it's there. And honestly, we've counted on y'all, you all to do it, because from the beginning, you said, stay out of it, we're gonna do it, you know, we don't, the city can't be a part in here, all that kind of stuff. You know, I...
You know, if, if, if y'all would just help us on that.
When you, when you keep saying, y'all help us, I don't know how much more help we give you. We put this thing out for a year.
Yeah, but...
We, we got our, we got our city personnel here that we have to depend on to guide us in the right direction. And he's standing right behind you telling you, tear the building down. And that's exactly what he's telling us. We've got a city attorney that says, y'all need to do something on this building. So, so my point is, you're saying, we hadn't done anything. We've stepped out there and put it off for a year, waiting on y'all to bring us some letters of intent, we can raise some money to do this. We're trying to let you do it, but it ain't happened.
Well, we're 501(c)(3) a non-profit.
501(c)(3).
Right. We're a non-profit.
Okay.
Do y'all donate to any nonprofits?
All the time.
Where's our money?
That's not how you raise money, and I think that may be part of the issue.
That's how they're raising money, somebody's raising.
Guys, let's, let's regain some order here. Councilman Alexander is recognized.
You know, I really applaud the effort that Mr. Griffin and his staff have been doing for years and years. But I personally would vote to give a hundred percent to build another one. I know you probably want the original, but at this stage, it's too late. It, it is too late. The building is, need to be demolished. And, and I've sat here while they have kicked this can down the road for a year. And, and it's not fair to you all. It's just not fair to you. The, the money is not there. And this council have bent over backwards to give you ample enough time to try to make an effort or to get maybe two or three letters of intent from somebody, from celebrity or anybody. We hadn't had that. And we have an obligation and responsibility to the citizen of Gallatin. If somebody go in and get hurt, it's our fault. And, and, and we have Mr. Stewart telling us, this building is dangerous, tear it down, tear it down. So I'm at the point tonight to make a motion to have the building demolished. That's where I stand.
Mr. Phan, may I ask you a question? Do you mind?
Pardon?
May I ask you a question?
Oh, I gotta stay on my part. Johnny got on his soapbox, I understand why, but my question wasn't answered. Maybe I didn't phrase it right.
I forgot your question.
Are you waiting on the government to make you an actual tax exempt organization?
That, no, we are. Right, we have filed the paperwork, it's my understanding, after talking to the IRS, it could be a hundred and eighty days. We could not qualify for the expedited 501(c)(3). There is an easy form, but that is for nonprofits who expect not to raise more than fifty thousand a year. I did not want to apply for that, and then I just get, say, two hundred thousand or what have you, and have to start back over. So what I did is the long form, it is a longer process. So that's...
And you get some LOIs, do you believe that you can, stating that once you are a tax exempt organization, that these people would donate? Is that the hangup, they want the deduction?
That, that is, when I was talking to Mr. Bledsoe, who I mentioned previously, you know, he, like I said, has a close connection with Randy, or had a close connection with Randy. You know, he's very involved in the project, he wants to give, but he's still trying to make up, you know, his firm decision. But he wants a 501(c)(3). He's on the board with Columbia Records, and I know they've given. But if I'm gonna go out to, like, Columbia Records, Sony, whomever, you know, they're gonna want to know that I've, I'm already 501(c)(3).
Do you think you could get some LOIs contingent on becoming tax exempt?
I think I can, but like I said, the two-week timeframe, which I'm appreciative of you giving us an extension, it's hard to get meetings set up. You know, like I said, I do work during the day, so I'm not as free to kind of go and do these meetings. I've left messages, trying to get in touch with people to get in front of different people to get those meetings set up. But I do honestly feel that that has been the hangup. Because we, we've had, you know, we got a thousand dollars from one person. And we've gotten the smaller donations in. We had a gentleman call us last week that wanted to make a donation on behalf of his father, who loved music. And it's just, again, them not seeing the progress, you know, because we've stated, if for whatever reason that this project did fall through, we would donate the funds we have raised to, you know, another nonprofit, probably St. Jude's. But people are wanting to donate, but they want to see progress. And right now, they're looking at it, and they're not seeing progress, obviously. And why do they want to give at this point?
Do you think you could get, uh, Mr. Bledsoe and whoever to give you an LOI contingent on that?
I will try. I tried previously, he is in his eighties. So I tried that tactic before when we had another previous meeting, and he said, I'm not sure what I'm gonna do yet. So I can certainly make that call again, and try to get in touch with him. Like I said, I've left several messages trying to connect, obviously, with this being a holiday week. A lot of people are vacationing, so it's hard to get in touch with people within these last, last couple of weeks.
Well, I, as one of the property owners, don't have a problem giving them an extension if one of the council members wants to make the motion, but I don't feel it's proper for me to make it, being a property owner.
My question, Abie, was going to be, would it be possible, and Mr. Stewart, you may want to weigh on this as well, for everything to be demolished except those three walls?
Yeah, I think that's a possibility. We'd have to get with Chuck over here and see what procedure we'd have to do.
Yes, you, you could demolish a portion of, of the site down there. You gotta go through the same steps, you have to have the asbestos survey done, there is asbestos, it has to be removed, and you could, you could take down the rest of the site. One thing I want to express to you tonight, and I went back and checked it this afternoon after I met with Johnny, was that, that building will have to be elevated. There's no getting around elevating it. Mr. McCord will support that. That building is sitting in floodplain. If you go in and do an epoxy on that floor, which is four feet below flood elevation, that's, you're still gonna have to elevate the building. So the finished floor would have to be raised with the flood vents and a few other things that, that the code requires. So it's quite a bit of work to do there. And in my opinion, if you take the other building down, I'm not so sure that building's not helping hold that one together right now. You'd have to answer engineer. So that's something I, I couldn't, not knowing how it was constructed, how it was built, I couldn't tell you.
I just have one question, and I'm afraid I already know the answer, but are there any plans for any fundraisers at all?
We've been trying, again, and you know, you know how this goes. People say, oh, yeah, I'm gonna help you put together a concert, I'm gonna do all this. And I had several people reach out, and then it's crickets. I mean, that's been the story of this project. You know, you've got two people here trying to work on it. We had other people involved previously who are no longer, I'll say no comment to that, but anyway. So we're just, we're trying to do what we can, again, trying to do a fundraiser. We've had some of the local, was that the Hendersonville Car Club? Possibly working something out with them that does, you know, the old cars, having a fundraiser of that sort. I did want to speak quickly about the flood, because when I took over back in March, April, I started investigating all of this, because this is not, you know, it's not my forte, I don't understand it. So I was looking for guidance. And I talked to the city, I also talked to the state, and it was my understanding that that structure could be floodproofed. There was no mention about raising the building. And I know you've got the new agreement with the Corps of Engineers regarding, I guess, Town Creek. So I didn't know how that was going to affect the floodway, if that had any, you know, bearings on this, this building.
We would know for some time if it was.
Okay. Like I said, I'm not, I'm not knowledgeable with this at all, so that's what I was trying to get information from, because what I didn't want to do is raise money, and then someone come in and say, well, you've got to raise the building, you've got to do this, this, and this, which really negates what we are trying to do. There's also mention about historic. The building itself, obviously, is not unattractive architecturally, but it's the person that was around that building and what events occurred in that building makes it historic. So that's another avenue, too, that was mentioned to me. If the building was deemed historic, there were ways around, you know, the flood and that sort of thing. That's what I was told. Like I said, I cannot get a clear answer.
I think once a building falls into that level of disrepair, then, I mean, that's the whole issue with everything that we have in the floodplain, it can't be rebuilt. And that, that's, you know, the issue that we've had. And I think Mr. Stewart contends that there's not enough of that building to deem it a building, because it's in such disrepair.
Even if, I thought someone had mentioned if there's fifty percent of that structure remaining. Because we can go in, like I said, Wosko said that they would come in and do steel rods and put concrete to stabilize it. And so essentially, it's just kind of, you know, the outer walls of the building. Again, we're very appreciative, you know, I didn't come on board until much later, but we're very appreciative of your extensions and that sort of thing. And I know it looks like we've not done a whole lot, but we have been working, you know, a lot of times it's dead ends. I do think it's an asset. I mean, I remember going into Randy's, probably right before it closed, in the nineties, you know, making purchases. I do think it would be, like I said, an asset, but there's a lot of work. And we still believe in this project, and hopefully, we could get another extension just to kind of explore, you know, if we can stabilize the building and that sort of thing, and possibly work out something with the owners, if they would work with us, and at least try to get money to stabilize it, so that it's no longer a danger.
I will, I'd like to say one other thing. I moved to Gallatin in the seventies, and I lived in East Tennessee, and I lived in West Tennessee. And I will say on three different occasions, when I told people I lived in Gallatin, the first thing that came out of their mouth is, that's where Randy's Records is. But now, two of those three are dead now, so.
Well, that was a delicate way to make a point.
Well, I'm just being honest. It's, it's, but there's still a lot of those people that are alive.
Okay. What's the will of this council, unless you have any more questions?
I'm not certain. Mr., Mr. Alexander, did you make a motion?
I did.
Oh, I thought you said you'd be willing to make a motion.
No, I said, I made a mo, I'm ma, I'm making a motion to have the building demolished, because this can't be repaired.
Have a motion by Councilman Alexander.
I'll say it in discussion.
Second by Councilman Hayes for discussion.
I mean, why are we pulling on this, y'all? Look how long we've been doing this. It makes no sense.
Well...
I admire, I admire you, Mr. Griffin, and I know you probably don't sound, but I admire you and your effort. But you, you, you just find a losing battle.
Yeah. Well, can I say one thing?
Well, we got a motion to second on that.
We do. It's for the, probably for this body to discuss at this point. They'll let you know if they have a question.
So you don't want me to hear?
Counsel? Have a motion in a second for purposes of discussion.
I mean, I, I just...
I have an offer out there, too, remember? Remember? To help. I bet Ms. Love would help. You've got a few weeks before you go back to school.
Y'all have, you've had a whole year to help.
Well, no, because we've been trying to let this group of citizens do it. I mean, and it was not appropriate to interfere, and so now I'm publicly offering to interfere. I think Tisha would accept that.
I would accept, and like I said, the previous people working on this project are no longer involved. And I would have accepted your help if I would have been spearheading it at that point. So that's all I'm gonna say to that matter.
More time, more time.
Try and figure out a fundraiser, try and figure out some avenues for some grants, figure out... My spare cap. Did you want to say so?
Well, I, I came here in the seventies, like Steve did, and actually, I got a story like Steve's. I was in Detroit, Michigan, going through customs at the airport. And Steve, I was looking at my passport, and he says, you from Gallatin, Tennessee? And I said, yes. And he said, well, do you know Randy's record store? I said, yes. I said, he was pretty much gone when I got there. But I said, I know about Randy's record store. And he said, I used to drive up a hill every Saturday night and listen to Randy's record store show of some kind. I don't know what he had. There is a lot of history out here. I'm semi-hippie, but not a big history buff. My thing is, is the same thing as what you, these people do. They have not seeked out any help, that's where they need to seek it from. They need some leadership, they need somebody to direct them to their leadership. And I don't know, I don't know if I got the capability to get it or not.
And I'm also a little bit like Craig, and maybe you. I'm not sure that it's gonna be the big hit in, in Gallatin, because I remember going to it, but, you know, people that are younger probably don't. People that are a lot older than me think of it as being on the square.
Well, one, one thing that, I mean, one thing that compelled me, and this was from our discussion today, that I had not really thought about, was the tie of Randy Woods to African-American artists, and how that helped those African-American artists become mainstream. And so for that, I think it may have some significance beyond just people that remember Randy's records, or people that like vinyl, or whatever. And so that's why I'm thinking that through that, there may be some avenues for some funding that, you know, they may not have thoughts, or really even probably had awareness to seek out. And I don't have a lot, but I think I could probably find some and figure out if there's that person that can identify this as a significant contribution to particularly black music history, that may be willing to put out some big money.
So Mary, do I hear you, and I think Mr. Phan, both, and y'all tell me if I'm wrong, but I hear y'all saying that y'all want to give them a little bit of time to see if there's something else out there they can do.
Well, he, he can't really, because he's one of the property owners.
He not gonna vote on it, I understand, but he can give his opinion.
But, well, I'm not gonna vote either. But I'm just, I, I mean, for the first time, I'm saying I might have some ideas. They might crash and burn, but giving me the opportunity to pursue some of these paths in my brain.
But here's what I'm hearing you saying, all right, there might be some ideas, but just a minute ago, you agreed with me. You don't think it's really gonna be a tourist attraction.
No, I'm not, I, I don't know that it is gonna be a tourist attraction. I do agree with that. I absolutely agree with that. But I think that there could be some historical significance that would make it important to, to preserve as a show. And it might be, I mean, this might evolve into something where it has a visitor's center and some record showcase associated with it, but the building would be preserved, and you could say that is where, you know...
And then who takes care of the building after it's done?
I don't know those things. We don't have that, that plan. We don't, I, I don't know what that is. I mean, I don't know.
A nonprofit should.
Yeah. A non-pro, a nonprofit association should. The city, I don't, I don't want the city taking care of it. I don't want the city, you know, I don't, I don't see that in the future. But, and I, and I could be wrong. I mean, but I feel like that's an avenue that may not have been explored, and I hate to tear the building down before we know.
After a while, you won't have to tear it down.
You're right.
It's gonna fall down. I mean, it just don't make sense, y'all.
You're right.
It don't make no sense.
Well, I've made an offer, so, it's council vote, so, not I.
I'll, I'll, I'll say again, it's to our advantage to go ahead, Michelle and I have to go ahead and get it tore out and do what we're gonna do, or whatever that's gonna be. But we're willing to wait if the council wants to give you an extension.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, but I'm not really sure what that motion in second is beyond to tear it down. What is the timeframe on that? Or declare it a dangerous building, or whatever it is for...
It's already been declared a dangerous building, so the city would have to give a timeframe for the owners to demolish the building, or the city would come in and demolish.
Okay. So you could give some time in that order.
But the motion is to, is to demolish.
Yeah.
So I thank you for wanting to give an extension. Those are counterproductive.
Well, I don't disagree, but, counsel?
Have a motion in second.
You have a motion in a second. With that, I'll call for a vote. Ms. Kitchell, would you take a voice vote on this, please?
Vice Mayor Camp?
Explain to me. Well, I'm gonna make sure, if we vote yes, then we're tearing the building down.
It's to demolish, but you've not set the timeframe yet.
Yeah, I'm just, I mean, but that's, it starts saying, if we vote no, that means we're gonna start to set up a timeframe.
Well, if you vote no, then you're not ordering them to demolish at this point.
I'm gonna say no.
Hey, can I make a comment?
No, so, we're voting.
You can get a million dollars.
Sit down.
Mr. Alexander? Mr. Fan?
Epstein.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Love? Mr. Overton?
It's tough.
Yes.
Okay, the motion, the, the motion to demolish passes three to two, so that means that this council needs to proceed forward with setting a timeframe for that.
There'll be a recommendation from Mrs. Stewart and I, because we had contacted the owners first.
Been here for a year.
I know, but what I'm saying, uh, correct me, uh, city attorney, but don't we have to inform the owners, uh, of our intent to?
Yeah, I'm, I'm also looking at, it has to pass by a majority of those present, and if there is one abstention. So there's a three to two, but there are six people, and abstention sometime, I think would count as a, as a no.
As a yes.
As a, as a yes, I'm sorry, yes it would, so that would put it to four.
Four to two.
So it would, does pass.
So what's the guidance on how they set the timeframe? Is there?
Mrs. Stewart?
Mr. Stewart?
If you look back at what we've done on other structures in the city, we normally go on thirty days to, uh, start the demo process.
Can we extend that?
To ninety?
It's up to you.
Just extend that, you know, if we know.
In case I can.
Yeah.
I make a motion, we give them ninety days.
Yeah.
I'd just like to say something. Ninety days may not be enough. Depends on how busy these guys are.
Oh, as far as getting it done?
Yeah, because I've talked to some of them.
Well, that would be up to the property owner to come forward and plead their case if they can't make it in ninety days.
I'll second Jimmy's motion.
Yes, you can give them ninety days to demolish the building. You can give them whatever you want, based on Mr. Stewart's recommendation.
We waited a year. Ninety days not gonna hurt us, okay?
Well, I'm confused, and I think Susan was, too, because if we're devoted to demolish it, what are, what is Paige gonna do in that? I mean, why, why are you working on getting something that?
Well, not, maybe not just that piece of it, but say he could preserve those three outer walls, and I think he's saying the timeframe to actually get someone to be able to demolish it.
I've talked to three different demolition guys, and they're all behind, and they won't give you an exact start date.
That was just me personally, seeing if I could pull a rabbit out of a hat, you know?
Rabbits that jumps out of a hat, if they can give them a million dollars. And build this building back.
Yeah.
Okay, so we got ninety days, first, second.
So you got ninety days?
Yeah, the motion, but who made the motion? I'm sorry. Motion by Councilman Overton, second by Councilman Hayes. Any discussion? On favor, please say aye. Opposed, say no. Okay, it does pass unanimously. There will be ninety days to demolition. That concludes the regular agenda. Brings us now to other business, and we have a couple of items of other business. The first one, I'm gonna ask Ms. Hamacalli to address with this council.
I am going to hand out a letter that was forwarded to me regarding our solicitation ordinances, and to let this body know that the city will need to be amending its ordinances. I have worked with the recorder and city judge, Ms. Kitchell, and we're going to try to come up with something that will, um, work to make our ordinance constitutional. The issue is the curfew, and there's also an issue with our do not solicit list, which I'm not as sold. There is no law cited in support of our do not solicit list being unconstitutional. After researching, I do think that we do need to amend the ordinance on the time of the curfew, what the Supreme Court has ruled in recent cases, that curfew of seven P.M. is what we currently have, and that has been deemed unconstitutional. So I have reached out to M-PAS and some other city attorneys across the state to see what their ordinances are, and I have also reached out to this firm and have not heard back from them on the do not solicit registry.
Who wants to press control, knocking on the door now, so I can know?
Oh, no, it's absurd.
Apparently, the Supreme Court says that it's a right, so we have to follow what the Supreme Court says, whether we like it or not.
We don't like it, I promise you.
And they came to my house last week, and I didn't answer the door, so I understand, but we do have to make sure our ordinances are constitutional. Or we don't have to amend them, and we can go to court, and a city in Colorado had to pay a half a million dollars in attorney's fees.
And I got a column, uh, right before this meeting from a neighbor that wanted to know who was knocking on the door selling stuff. I mean, it is so aggravating. And of course, the solution is, is no, maybe I shouldn't say that from the seat. The solution is, is not to buy anything.
We need to get constitution, let's do that, whatever we have to do.
Yeah, so that's bad news. Everybody understand what's up? Okay, the next item is Ms. Nichols has put a resolution on your desk. I don't know if she wants to bring it up, or she wants me to bring it up. I'm sorry, it's an ordinance. And this is related to the purchase of the three properties, Coles Ferry property, the East Vane property, and the Station Camp property, and this is allocating the funds for the purchase of those.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Motion by Councilman Overton?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Love. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, please say no.
No.
Okay, uh, voice vote, please, Ms. Kitchell.
It's four to two.
It's not four to two. It was not four to two. Ms. Kitchell?
Vice Mayor Camp?
No.
Mr. Alexander?
Yeah.
Mr. Fan?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
No.
Ms. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Overton?
Yes.
Well, y'all are right. I'm sorry.
Four to two.
Okay. Well, no, I had heard it from both sides that it was four to two. Okay, it passes four to two. Well, thank you. Um, and so any other, other business this evening?
Second reading.
Okay. Yes, we will have second reading, um, in two weeks, and I'm... Okay, and, and I should have said before we did this that we should have had permission to bring it forward without it going to, um, work session, but I assume that this council's okay with that, since you'd already voted on the purchase.
No, not really, but, you know.
But I'm, I am delighted that we're able to move forward on that. Now, onto other business. Ms. Love?
I just wanted to ask David Gra-, David Brown a question, which David, I asked you to check on water fountains for the park back in May, and I wondered if you had ever found out anything about putting some in.
We're looking at a few to put in. We do have one at the dog park now. We have one at the disc golf course, and we're looking at some more. The, the problem is, there's not water lines throughout the park, like on the greenway or whatever. There's no water line. So we have to work out getting some water lines running.
Think you can get some at the playgrounds, for sure, I mean, especially at the playgrounds.
We're, we're working on all the little sections. There, there is one at the pavilion, where there's a water fountain down there, and the bathrooms are there.
So you have, so you're working on it?
We're working on it.
Thank you.
Mr. Overton?
Ma-, Mayor, thank you. I just got two announcements real quick that I want to make sure everybody's aware of. The fishing derby has been moved to the twentieth of July.
That's right, I forgot about that.
Uh, for, for, please come out and join that. I think WSM is sponsoring that, and they, they made that to the, moved that to the twentieth, so it's a free fishing day and a fishing derby. And also Liberty Baptist Church is having their fish fry on July thirteenth from two to six, and invites everybody out to that, so.
Yeah, that fishing derby's gonna be really awesome. Actually, I don't go that far on my calendar. I saw it on there, so.
I just want to make sure everybody knows about it.
Okay. Anything else from the council this evening? Okay, now we'll move to public recognition on nine agenda-related items. This is the time of the meeting where people can come forward to address something that's not on the agenda. Again, give us your name, address, and please limit your comments to five minutes.
Oh, good evening. It's Mr. Reeners at three seventeen Malone Drive. I just want to say, if you quit adding toxic fluoride waste to our drinking water for sixteen years, at twenty-five thousand dollars a year, you could pay their million dollars. Okay? The problem I got with this city is, for one, your police are violating more laws than your citizens are. Okay? I got body cams, dash cams that aren't being recorded under policy. What else we got? Um, recordings, audio recordings that are supposed to be made to protect the police department and your citizens that aren't being recorded? Okay? So the, these police departments that are supposed to protect the people are, are actually harassing the people. And I'm telling you guys, I'm not playing. I'm, I'm not playing with you guys. I, I like you, Ms. Love. I like you, Ms., Ms. Brown. I like you, Mr. Alexander, Mr. Fan, I never met you before, Mr. Hayes. No real opinion on that one. Mr. Camp, I like you. Connie, I like you, too. And actually, I like Chief Bandy. He put me in a good position to, to put, put his city in their place, because I'm not playing with the corrupt, okay? You all could help this record company. You all have the funds to help the record company. You need to help the record company. All right? You need to take the fluoride water and put the money you spend on it and pay for the record company. All right? Because every day, I want every dash cam, every body cam, every recording from every officer, and if I don't get it, you're obstruction justice, and I'm going to the federal courthouse, and I'm pressing charges on your police. Bye.
Anyone else wishing to speak under public recognition on non-agenda-related items? I suspect you'll have cheerier greetings.
Ma'am?
I said, "I suspect you'll have cheerier greetings."
My name is Joe DeBoer, and I live at one double oh seven Hart Street in Galton, Tennessee. My little deal tonight is this. The mayor is a number-one promoter, period. I mean, she's all to the point of having something on me that promotes the city of Galton, so she...
I did not, hey, I've got to insert a disclaimer. I did not address Mr. DeBoer this evening.
Yeah, I know you did, Mayor, because it's the right way to go. Now, with that, I have a, I have something I need to get to Ms. Connie. She takes money. She's good at that. Got any more to pass around, Joe? No, Mr. Jimmy, what this deal is all about is your wastewater. That is my total fee for the year. You don't have to go looking for it. You don't have to go nine dollars a month. It's already there, and you can go ahead and spend it. That is your budget for the wastewater. Okay, from me for the year.
Thank you, Miss Joe.
I, I, I know you are, Jimmy, but here's the catch. I want to follow up on one thing, Mr. Jimmy. I pick on you because I like you. And, and that is, uh, did we pay Peter to pay Paul? Did we pay, uh, back the, uh, the, the big kitty in order to take care of our wastewater deal this, this past year for it to have its budget, it to have its people, it to have its equipment? Did we pay that back from the fees that we got? Uh, that is supposed to be a, uh, supposed to be a self-perpetuating operation. In other words, the money I give from me right there is what we do to pay for those fees, period. And it should also help pay for the building out there that Brother Hayes fussed about from now to Christmas time. And, uh, we want to make sure that that is taken care of out of those fees. Also, the, the salaries of the people be, uh, be prepaid, needs to be paid back. Uh, this city has a little bad history along that line. I've heard tales about other things that goes wrong, but we don't need to do that now, because, Mayor, you're the one in charge, and you take care of business.
I have no clue what you're talking about, but all right.
Okay. Well, they, they want from Peter to pay Paul, and they don't pay him back. Mm-hmm. That's what the problem is, so we've got to make sure that's done.
Thank you.
Anyway, that's all I got to say, except, uh, I got a question. When y'all gonna put my sidewalk in front of my house? Do I have to pay for it?
Hey, that would help.
You want me to pay for it, Mayor? Hey, all I need to do is, is get Buck back to our office very early and come by and fix me up.
I've always said, if anyone's interested in a sidewalk on their street, if they'll get all their neighbors to agree to it and donate the property, we're way ahead of the game.
Way a many, honey, you, we're way ahead of the game on that in my neighborhood, because guess what? In front of my house, the, the, the rock's there.
It's gotta be the whole street, though, it can't be your house.
No, 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 no. See, see, here's the catch. You go over here with new bill. I know it's over on, on, uh, yeah, Red River, wherever. Anytime, anytime you have a, a company comes in and they build something, you gotta put a sidewalk in. What's the difference from me putting my sidewalk in?
That, that's not cost-effective for the city to do individual properties.
Now, 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 Mayor, now, Mayor, you need to be able to, to have a sidewalk in front of the house.
Get all your neighbors to agree to it and come back. I bet we could.
We've got them out. We've got the land, because you, you got, you got land in front of the house. It's yours. I've got, I've got the base now out there in front of the house, too.
I don't know what the right way is on your street.
Yeah.
This comment, I'm not supposed to be, like, discussing with you.
I know all about that, but we have a good time. So I'm just gonna leave that with you to figure it out and get Buck out there, and he, he knows all the story. He's the man.
I don't have him in front of mine either.
Huh?
I don't have him in front of mine.
Well, some people don't want it. Well, you got a ditch in front of yours. I don't, thank God. I can park a big rig in front of my house and not have to worry about it.
All right.
Later.
Thank you, Mr. DeBoer. Anyone else for public comment on items that were not on this evening's agenda? All right. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion, second on favor, say aye. We're adjourned. I wish everyone a very happy Independence Day. May you celebrate it and remember... I pray that.